Thank you. Okay, with that, I see no awards and proclamations. At this time, we will have open it up for citizens forum. This is an opportunity for individuals that would like to address the commission about something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please give your name and where you're from and limit your comments to five minutes. And I believe there was a sheet sent out as to how to raise your hand and be recognized by the moderator. I don't know if you, Jacob, would like to say anything about that?
I'm sure I will just go through it real quick for everyone. If you'll allow me here. If I can get to the correct screen. Okay, so when you want to raise your hand, here's a couple of ways to do it. You can see this is what the screen looks like, or you look like at least on a Windows machine. If you want to come down to this tab here that says participants, click on that button, and that button will open up the participants box. And then down here at the corner of that box, it may be three dots, there may be a hand there. Every machine seems to be a little bit different, but if you click on that, that should give you the option to raise hand and hit that raise hand button, it'll show up just like here, and I will be able to see that. If that's not working for you, you can click on the chat function. I mean, click on that button, the chat box will come up, and then it'll give you an option to chat with me. I won't do a dialogue back and forth, but it will just give me an opportunity to let you have the mic. And that's the end of presentation. So if you, if you want to speak, you can also just wave your hand if you're on the screen, and I'll see if I can get you access. So at this point, if there's anybody that would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand or wave at me, and we will give you that opportunity.
Debbie Pack, I just want to let you know we can hear now, if you can hear us.
Yep, Debbie, you're good. Okay, and I don't see any hands at this point. So I think we're good to go, Mayor.
Okay, with that, if you can hear Shandy, we will move into public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on the proposed 2020 amended budget.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, our 2020 budget was adopted in August of 2019. And as we see expenditures for the current year, we keep track of those to see if any funds are going to need an amendment. We have discovered that the special gas tax fund will need that. And as I reported in my staff sheet, the reasoning for that was because when COVID hit back in March, we revisited a lot of our projects, our street projects. The fund originally had $1.181 million worth of street projects funded. And due to the uncertainty of COVID and the sales tax, we had reallocated several projects to that fund. One of the big ones was U-Bass or the kind of the Mill and Overlake project. And the other reason that we have an overage in that budget authority is that we were allowed an additional $400,000 in federal fund exchange money, which then there again increased our expenditures. So staff is recommending that we increase the budget in the special gas tax fund by $650,000 for a total of $2,318,193. Upon approval, this budget amendment will go back, go to the county for submission to the state. So we have two action items. We need to conduct the public hearing for comments from citizens, and then we need to consider approval of that amended budget.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from staff or from commission? Do we have any comments from the public? Mr. Wood, do we see anybody?
I don't see any hands at this time.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, this is Carl Ryan speaking. I move we approve the amended budget.
Second, Commissioner Dave.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended budget. We will do a roll call.
Davis.
Oh, I couldn't hear, okay.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes five to zero. Thank you. That will bring us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approved amendments of December 14, 2020. Item 6.2, approved resolution number 20-7910, establishing water and wastewater rates effective February 1, 2021, and the comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina.
Hey, is there any item that a city commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Hodges here. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Commissioner Dave, the second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 and 6.2. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That also passes five zero. That will lead us to administration.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 20-11049, establishing the former SAFB Environmental Project Fund.
Hey, Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. The recent months abroad sequence of developments for the city of Salina and the other public entities as it relates to the remediation of environmental contamination at the former Schilling Air Force Base. On October, the October 26th, the city commission adopted a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the entities. As part of that agreement, section 5.2 stipulated that the city of Salina would establish by ordinance a separately budgeted special revenue fund to be titled Former SVFB Environmental Project Fund. The purpose of this fund is to track receipts and authorize expenditures to complete the scope of work ultimately developed in conjunction with consent agreement and final order to be entered into with the SPEs and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. On November 23rd, the consent decree documenting the settlement between the United States Department of Justice and the SPEs was approved and that initiated the transfer of $65,900,000 to the SPEs. Once those funds are deposited, those funds will go into this fund. And as a result, the city of Salina will need to establish that fund. And in the next item, you will see we will need to establish a budget for that fund. Staff has identified five options. One is to approve ordinance, a staff ordinance 20-11049, establishing the former Schilling Air Force Base Environmental Project Fund. Approve the ordinance with amendments as commission deems appropriate. Postponed consideration of the ordinance to a specific time and date and give us some further information that you would like to request for further consideration. Approve the ordinance on first reading and provide us with direction for additional information you might need prior to second reading or vote to deny the ordinance, which basically would result in the city of Salina not meeting their requirement in the agreement that they signed back on October 26th. Staff recommends option number one. Now, I could stand for questions, and I'm sure Mr. Bankston's on the line and Mr. Scruggs that can answer any questions also.
Hey, Mayor Hoppick here. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? I guess my quick question is, and just to update us, I'll look at city manager. Those funds have not yet hit our account, and I believe they have a certain amount of days in which to forward those dollars to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We've had conversations with them about bank routing numbers, so they are inquiring and making the preparations for that. And we received an email shortly before this meeting started that our special environmental council advised that, we're not sure why, but they're asking for the tax ID numbers of the other public entities, even though the funds will be coming to the city of Salina. And so they continue to inquire about some details, all in anticipation of making the transfer. The agreement itself provides that they'll do so in a reasonable amount of time. While it doesn't specify a deadline for the transfer, it does impose interest charges being accrued after 90 days. So all indications are they're making preparations to make the wire transfer here pretty soon.
Okay. Do we, any other, any commissioners, questions, comments? I see heads bobbing, no. I will look at Mr. Wood to see if there are any, anyone from the public out there to make a comment?
None.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Davis, I move we approve ordinance 20-11049, establishing the former Schilling Air Force Base Environmental Project Fund.
Commissioner Hodges.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11049. We will have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes five zero. That will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 amended budget.
Okay, Ms. Pack, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. This is related to the action that we just took. We've established that fund. However, when we created the 2021 budget back in August of 2020, we had not entered into this agreement, nor did we know this fund was going to need to exist. So in light of that, we would need to amend the budget for 2021 to include this budget, since it is required to be a budget expenditure. We have to do that in the year in which the budget applies, so we have to do that in 2021. However, state statute requires that we have a formal public hearing and that we publish that formal public hearing 10 days prior to the hearing. So the request from staff today is to authorize the publication for the notice of public hearing for the 2021 amended budget, which sets January 4th, as the date for the public hearing on the 2021 amended budget, and establishes the maximum limits of the expenditures for that amended budget. Would stand for any questions?
Okay, Mayor Hoppick here. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Okay, do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on this?
See none at this time, Mayor Hoppick.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Hodges, I move that we authorize the publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 amended budget.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion, a second to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 amended budget. We will have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That also passes five zero. That will lead us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, authorize the fire department to purchase replacement of its heart monitor defibrillators and 18 automatic external defibrillators, AEDs.
Okay, I believe we have Chief Royce with us. Have we unmuted Chief Royce?
There we go.
Hello, Chief. Good afternoon.
Mayor, commissioners, good afternoon. Kevin Royce, Fire Chief. I'm here today to ask for authorization for the fire department to replace its eight heart monitor defibrillators and 18 automatic external defibrillators, or commonly known as AEDs, from the Zoll Medical Corporation. These heart monitors are used by our paramedics in the field to assess and treat cardiac emergencies in pre-hospital settings. They're used on almost every call, especially if it's a cardiac issue. Our current monitors were purchased in 2014, and they are nearing the end of their life cycle. Specifically, the department has been noticing more frequent service of the existing monitors. Their battery lives are coming to the end of their life cycles to the tune of about $600 per battery. Our AEDs are literally no longer FDA compliant, cannot be, they still work, don't get me wrong, but they can't be serviced or parts ordered. And these new monitors will allow functions such as patient information to be transmitted to Salina Regional in real time. The eight heart monitors would go on our seven ambulances and one medical officer vehicle. The department is also wishing to replace its 18 automatic external defibrillators or AEDs for all of its staff and fire apparatus. Now, these AEDs are used by first arriving crews to treat things such as sudden cardiac arrest and to reestablish survivable heart rhythms until advanced life support can arrive on scene. Our current AEDs, as I mentioned earlier, are Philips brand, and they are no longer compliant. Therefore, this will be the first time we've ever had all of our AEDs and heart monitors by the same company, and that's going to be Zoll, which allows for seamless patient transfer care in the field when used. The department wishes to purchase this equipment from Zoll Medical Corporation pursuant to meeting the city of Salina sole source selection method, as addressed by the city's purchasing policy, specifically for a continuation of existing project or continuity of similar services in which past performance is considered acceptable and knowledge of specific work has been demonstrated. There's a list of some bullet points on page two at the top that these considerations, which would allow us to ask for the sole source acceptance. This is a little bit unique. This usually would have probably come next year because it's using subs 2021 funds. Zoll is offering a auto pulse CPR backboard in this purchase at no extra cost to the tune of almost $11,000. This is a very important piece of equipment. And currently, the department only has one right now. This would give us our second auto pulse, and it's basically an automatic CPR machine. We have contacted Ms. Pack in the finance department. She has contacted her auditors, and as long as we order before December 31st to receive the added value from Zoll, they said we could go ahead and use some CIP 2021 funds. They, but these were budgeted at $342,560. The quote came in at $276,675 and 6, I'm sorry, 50 cents. I'll read the recommended actions and then answer any questions you may have. EMS chief Shane Pearson is also available here to get into some of the technical issues if you wish. The recommended action, number one, authorize the department to purchase eight heart monitor defibrillators and 18 AEDs to Zoll Medical Corporation in the sum of $276,675.60, as approved in the 2021 sub CIB budget. Number two, do not authorize the purchase of eight heart monitors, defibrillators, and 18 AEDs to Zoll Medical Corporation in sum of $276,675.60, as approved in the 2021 sub CIP budget, and provide direction to the medical, I'm sorry, to the fire administration. Fire administration is recommending the approval of action item one, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Mayor Hoppick here. I will open it up for questions from commissioners.
Commissioner Davis, I think wonderful equipment. I was just curious about one thing has nothing to do with equipment. What is the medical officer vehicle? How often does that respond to call?
The medical officer vehicle is basically our EMS supervisor. It's a 24-hour shift position. It's basically a suburban, and it does respond on all serious calls. He kind of can, can make any call that he deems his expertise and supervision is needed also. Obviously, all serious vehicle wrecks, cardiac arrests, he definitely responds to out in the county and in the city. He's just an added paramedic on the scene. It's in a supervisory position, and he does carry that auto pulse machine, which is very important.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I'll look to Mr. Wood to see if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on this. Mr. Wood, are you there?
Never stops.
Saw his lips. I don't believe there was, so.
I wonder if the firearm is trumping Mr. Wood's audio.
Could be.
Yeah, hear me? Can you hear now?
Now we can.
Now we can. Okay. I don't, there are none.
Okay, okay, there are no comments. I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner France here. I would move that we authorize the department to purchase eight heart monitor defibrillators and 18 AEDs, Zoll Medical Corporation, in the sum of $276,675.60.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Hoppick here. We have a motion, a second to authorize the department to purchase the eight heart monitor defibrillators, 18 AEDs from Zoll Medical, as approved in the 2021 sub CIP budget. With that, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, that passes five to zero. We will move on to 7.4.
Item 7.4, resolution number 20-791, urging the city manager to execute an agreement with Delta Dental of Kansas Incorporated for dental care benefits.
Hey, Ms. Fisher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and commissioners. Before you is consideration to renew our agreement with Delta Dental of Kansas. Just a recap, that city of Salina is self-insured, so our approach is every pay period, we take contributions from both the city and then withholding from employees and place that into a fund to pay claims, admin fees, expenses, anything related to our health insurance coverage, rather than pay for coverage directly to the different insurance companies. In addition to the city employees, our subgroups are covered. This is the Salina Airport Authority, the Salina Housing Authority, the Salina Public Library, and our retirees, or I should say, and also any individuals that have elected Cobra coverage. The approach with dental is a little bit different than our other providers. We do not have stop-loss coverage, as with our health insurance and soon to be with our prescription coverage. The benefits are capped in the plan design itself, $1,500 annual benefit for each one of our covered members. The exception to that would be unlimited cleanings or preventative care for children 12 and under, and that was enacted this year in February. So it's hard to gauge exactly if there's impact by adding those, just because this has not been a typical year for claims. Along with the access to the different discounts that Delta Dental Network provides us, they are a solid claims administrator, provide good customer service and a large number of providers that are in their network. They charge us fees per member per month. There is a slight increase of .05 cents per member per month. We had anticipated that the rate that we will be charged if we renew is what was going to be charged this year, but due to an administrative error on their end, they said they were honoring $3.90 per member per month, rather than moving us with the five cent increase. So just to clarify, the new rates, if we were to renew, would be $3.95 per member per month, and then we would also pay any claims. And they have offered this rate for three years if we would choose to renew for that many years. Currently, our dental is budgeted at $20,318, looking at the 2021 budget, with claims at $4.64, $5.50. When I took the quarter of our highest concentration of members for this year, it does place our admin fees slightly higher than that, but I was trying to project absolute worst-case scenario. And in terms of how we have been trending with claims even the year prior, before the pandemic, it appears that we would have adequate coverage in the budget for our dental benefits to continue. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, but the recommended action before you would be to reapprove resolution 207920, authorizing the city manager to renew Delta Dental of Kansas for three years. An alternative would be authorizing the city manager to renew Delta Dental of Kansas for just one year, or to request that staff take other action related to our dental benefits.
Okay, Mayor Hoppick here. Questions or comments for staff?
Commissioner Davis, just one question for orthodontics. Is, when you say excluded, is that as far as the city covering any, or does an employee have up to $1,500 that they could use towards orthodontics, or it's not covered at all?
Orthodontics are not covered at all. We have looked in, I would say probably within the last few years, to see if the benefit exists for us to say, could we add orthodontia riders? And it just seems to be so cost prohibitive that someone would be better suited to set the money aside in their flexible spending account and go that route. So yeah, it's excluded altogether. It's considered cosmetic rather than standard dental care.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Wood, do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment?
At this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Davis, move we approve resolution 20-7920, authorizing the city manager to renew the Delta Dental of Kansas agreement for three years.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Okay. This, Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7920. We will do a roll call.
Oh, hang on, it, in our...
It says 7921 on our white sheet on the agenda, and it shows 7920 on the blue sheet, which is correct.
Well, actually, the resolution number on the white, the official resolution does say 21.
21.
And the agenda does as well. It leads me to believe that it's 21. But Shandy, are you there?
Yeah, Debbie's grabbing our official book to check to see which one it is.
Okay.
Yes, 21, 7921.
Okay.
Make that change then to resolution 20-7921.
And who seconded that?
Carl Ryan, second.
Okay, so we have motion now reads to approve resolution number 20-7921, authorizing the city manager to renew the Delta Dental of Kansas agreement for three years. We will, with that, have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
And did Mayor Hoppick say aye also? Didn't know. Okay, that will lead us to item number seven point five.
Item seven point five, resolution number two zero dash seven nine two four, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Tria Health to provide therapy management.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, Tria Health is what they refer to as a medication therapy management company. They have a circle of care approach which focuses on our high-risk individuals with chronic conditions, multiple medications. They they strive to coordinate and communicate with the physicians, often specialists, sometimes multiple specialists, and pharmacies to ensure that we don't have medications interacting with each other, working against each other, and to make sure that some of our employees aren't prescribed medication that's not needed. In addition to just focusing on those high-risk areas, they also have a program where any of our covered plan members can call and talk to a life pharmacist to get advice on over-the-counter medication or advice on just standard medication that has been prescribed to them or their family members. This is, we had just finished our fifth year with Tria, and we have been very impressed and and pleased with the results. In addition, we've received lots of testimonials, a lot of feedback from our employees on how much they appreciate the benefit. Anything we receive from Tria, obviously, due to protected health information, doesn't have names, so the only way that we know that someone is participating and is having good results and and good feedback is if they happen to, the employees stop it in or email us or call us to express it directly. The unique aspect about this benefit is it's really the only one that I can think of that we've put into play where it is reducing the risk for the city without shifting it to the employee. And it's shifting the risk or reducing the risk for both the city and the employees and getting better outcomes. So in addition to it working with medication, I I do consider it a wellness benefit as well. The twenty twenty-one budgeted health claims and admin overall for the City of Slina is six million, nine thirty-six, three hundred, with an estimated drug spend of one point three, one point five three, five eight. With Tria, including their fees and their savings, over the last five years, we have netted a savings of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Last week, you approved our transition from Elixir to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. Tria has already reached out to me and said, in the event that our agreement is renewed by you, that they would be in contact with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. They work with them on other clients, so it it would not be a new relationship, and we knew going in that if we made that transition that we could keep this program. The estimated fees, without any incentives, we're looking at forty-two thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. I would be happy again to answer any questions or take any feedback. The I'm gonna back up the, I I misspoke there. When I said forty-two thousand dollars, that actually does take into account the claim, or some of the incentives. And by incentives, they categorize and separate out some of the discounted drugs that they give our employees for engaging in their programs. So administrative alone, we're looking at thirty-five thousand, nine sixty-four, and then adding some of the incentives in would be just under another five thousand dollars. That staff is requesting that you approve resolution number twenty seventy-nine twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute execute an addendum to Tria Health for medication therapy management services for two years. Another alternative would be to approve that resolution with amendments as the commission deems fit. You could also postpone consideration to a specified date and time or vote to deny it altogether.
Hey, Mayor Hoppick here. I will open it up for questions or comments from the commission.
Ms. Fisher, I noticed that going from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, our net savings are going down. Is that just because Tria has already worked with the majority of our employees and there's fewer savings to be gained because they've already engaged in this, in in the program?
Um, I am not a hundred percent certain on that. I do think that they have reached maybe a few of the individuals that have been very impactful. I think we have a lot of individuals that are more resistant, that we still have a chance to engage. This year, it has been lower than I expected. Could be a lot of of reasons for that. I'm I'm still happy with our savings, but I do think we we still have individuals out there that at this point are just still resistant, and maybe that's a a goal for us to make sure we are educating our employees as best we can on on what Tria could offer them. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Davis, I I had actually noticed the same trend. And I and I wrote three little comments. I said, generally, I'm guessing that means our turnover of employees who are engaged in our insurance policies and prescription plans isn't turning over that much, so you probably do have the same employees on the same medicine, so the 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 interventions to save the money occurred several years ago, so there probably are fewer savings. But I would I would be hesitant to to not continue a program like this, just because there's always new medicines. I'm not sure if Tria is the agency that works with my insurer, but an intervention program like this, just this weekend, saved me two hundred dollars a month. For a drug which will do the same thing. Consider myself a reasonably informed consumer in that regard, but you know, if you don't have to spend more, then there's no reason to spend more. But it's, and I I imagine, you know, it's probably a testament to the fact that our employees stick with us. And so the opportunity to make changes is, will decrease some over time.
I I had mentioned in the staff report that I will be elaborating and getting more information. I don't have everything that I want at this point in time in upcoming or the next time that I have a commission information memorandum, but that is one of my questions is if the representatives at Tria can tell me, you know, the turnover and from year to year, if they can tell me what percentage have continued to engage, or are we dealing with different employees? We also have a lot of new employees, so I I think it's a matter of just increasing our education there as well.
Ms. Fisher, Tria doesn't really negotiate pharmaceutical rates like Blue Cross or Blue Shield would. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what Tria is looking to do is just to make sure that for whatever the conditions are that an individual has, to make sure that they're getting the best deal with the effective ingredients that have been proven for those medication changes, and before they even complain or conclaim those as savings, they wait a period of time and follow up and make sure that the individual is satisfied and the doctor and the individual notices that there's continuing to improve and not going the other way to where maybe, because sometimes you do hear, if they change drugs, you don't get the same outcomes. But they they monitor for a period of time before they say, yeah, we'll save the individual some money.
Commissioner Davis, you know, it could well be that they're also have an effect on the prescribing patterns of the physicians. They may be training the physicians in addition to to helping patients.
Commissioner Fran, you kind of, Ms. Fisher, you kind of touched on a question I had, and that is I presume that Tria calculates that savings by looking back at those individuals who've changed their prescriptions and looking at the difference and maybe the annualized cost of those changes. I presume that would be the way it was done.
That that is some of the savings that they calculate.
Okay.
And they they do show that some of their math and show that they are taking a conservative approach, so they're never overstating. But the the savings in the drugs, whether it's changes or eliminations, they also have a formula to where they can show the value of compliance, keeping someone taking their drugs, which might cost our plan more on the drug side, but could save on the medical side if someone has impacts from from not taking their medication as prescribed.
And I presume since our plan is what a thirty percent pay, that the employee saves as well.
With with the Tria program?
Yes.
So there's, and I don't have all the breakdowns in front of me, but there are different incentive levels depending on what the drugs are. For example, if it's a generic, they may get their generic drugs completely free for engaging in the program. If it's a higher-end name-brand drug, they might have or have a a certain rate where the employee sees substantial savings, and we have heard that directly from employees. I know that there's savings for individuals with diabetes that have engaged. They get substantial savings on their their supplies. So not just drugs, but on the supply side as well.
I have Mayor Hoppick here, one other question. As does the city have any exposure? If a Tria made a recommendation and it caused a negative outcome, would we have any type of exposure from that?
Would have to really dig into the way our agreement is written and then probably look so legal, but if I recall, when there's changes made, there's repeated follow-ups with both the individual and the prescribing physician to make sure that there is no problems. I guess if there was a very, very serious reaction of some sort, possibly, but there's, there are highly trained pharmacists that are.
Yeah, Mayor Hoppick here. I guess my question was, if there was, does that fall back on Tria, or does it fall back to us? That was, I guess.
This is Mike Scragg here, and I I'm speculating a little bit, but they're not changing the prescription by their own authority. They're recommending an alternative to the prescribing physician. So I think it probably rests with the prescribing physicians.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Davis, it falls back on the on the physician. And we will be told that no one coerced us into changing the prescription. If we think the patient needs it, then we're duty-bound to give it to them. So the, yeah, the the buck stops with the physician.
Okay, that that's the answer I wanted to hear. So, thank you. Okay, any other questions? I will look to Mr. Wood to see if there's any participants who would like to participate. Was that a no?
Yeah, no hands at this time.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Hodges, I move that we approve resolution number twenty dash seventy-nine twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Tria Health to provide therapy management. For an additional two years.
Second.
Okay, Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number two zero dash seven nine two four. We will have a roll call.
Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
It looks like he's muted. It's a thumbs up.
Aye, that's four yays and a thumbs up. Okay, with that, we will move on to item seven point six.
Item seven point six, first reading ordinance number two zero dash one one zero four eight, granting to Kansas Gas Service a division of One Gas Incorporated and its successors and a assigns a natural gas franchise.
Okay, looks like Mr. Wood, this is your item.
That's correct. Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, deputy city manager. This is our our franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Service. This is, basically, it's the agreement that allows Kansas Gas Service to sell gas to our our citizens and also to distribute gas, and they use our right of way to do that. So this outlines the rules for how that works, and then it also outlines the fee that they pay the city for us allowing that to happen. Kansas Gas Service actually entered its first agreement with the city in nineteen eighty-six. That agreement was a twenty-year agreement. We subsequently had a fifteen-year agreement in two thousand and six that expires at the end of this year. So the provisions of this agreement are very similar to what we've had in the past. I will highlight a couple of things that are a little bit different, maybe. It is a twenty-year term. You know, we've had a longstanding relationship with Kansas Gas, so we don't see any reason why we wouldn't make it a a long-term agreement. Probably the biggest thing here is we are recommending an increase from five percent of gross receipts to six percent. And what that does is that brings us in line with what we charge for our franchise for our electric utility right now. So that'll go from, if if you guys approve this, it'll go from five percent of gross receipts to six percent of gross receipts that we would collect. And the fiscal note on this, we collect about nine hundred thousand dollars a year. That's our average over the last four years, so an increase from five percent to six percent of gross receipts will 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 get about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually. One other note with this, we do have another ordinance on on the books that was passed in two thousand and five. That's ordinance number zero five one zero two nine one, and that kind of outlines some of the rules and regulations. If we were to have another gas company come in to try and do a franchise, we will have to maybe make some small changes to that, but we don't have that prepared for you tonight. But that's something we'll bring back to the city commission in early twenty twenty-one. So your options tonight are to approve the ordinance on first reading. You can approve the ordinance with amendments, or you could postpone with a specified direction to staff, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions at this time.
Mayor Hoppick here. I'm looking to other commissioners. Do we have any questions or comments?
Commissioner Hodges, this is probably not in your purview or our purview, but I'm assuming that that increased franchise fee is passed on to the consumer? Or that's?
Yeah, so whatever the gross receipts are that they they have, they are paid by Kansas Gas Service. So yes, certainly, they probably are passed on to some extent, but that's a, we we just see what the total gross receipts that they collect, and then they they pay us based on those.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? Mr. Wood, I, can you refresh me? Are those, these dollars, are they earmarked for any particular use, or do they go into the general fund?
These go into the general fund. There is no, they're not earmarked for any particular use.
I could not remember, so thank you. Any other? How about any one from the public? Have their hand up?
I I don't see any, Mayor.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Hodges, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number twenty dash one one zero four eight, granting to Kansas Gas Service a division of One Gas Inc. and its successors and assigns a natural gas franchise.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two zero dash one one, one one zero four eight on first reading. We will do a roll roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Okay, thank you. That will lead us to development business.
Item eight point one, application Z twenty dash four, requesting a change in zoning district classification from C three Shopping Center District and R three Multi-Family Residential. The C four Central Business District on property addresses three oh three South Pantry Avenue, three hundred South Fifth Street, 300 South Fifth Street, and 308 South Fifth Street. Item 8.1A, first reading ordinance number 20-1047.
Okay, this is Mayor Hoppick here. I have let City Manager Scragg and have asked Vice Mayor Hodges to please take this item and run with it. And the fact that I do have an outstanding order with Lighthouse Properties and will be recusing myself at this point. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. This is, this is Commissioner Hodges. Thank you, Mayor Hoppick. Mr. Andrew, would you like to take us through the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hodges. This is Dean Andrew, and I am presenting you with an application that's been filed by Lighthouse Properties 3 LLC. And it's associated with property that's across the street to the south from the Homewood Suites Hotel. And this property is currently vacant, but was formerly occupied by a nonhistoric home at 308 South Mulberry, a historically designated home that's at 300 South Mulberry and the former Taco John's Restaurant at 303 South Santa Fe. The home at 308 South Mulberry was demolished and removed. The Taco John's Restaurant building was demolished and removed, but that restaurant relocated to 418 East Iron. And then the historically designated home at 300 South Mulberry was donated by Lighthouse Properties to the Ashby House and was relocated from that site over to the corner of Walnut and Eighth and is in the process of being refurbished. Historically, this property's been kind of oddly zoned in that it was zoned C3. And primarily, it was zoned C3 because drive-through restaurants are not permitted in the C4 Central Business District. So in order to have a Taco John's with drive-through service, it was zoned C3. And then the home at 308 South Mulberry was zoned R3. So Lighthouse Properties has acquired all these properties. They filed this application. All of their other land holdings are zoned C4, part of the Central Business District. And they've requested that this property also be given a C4 Central Business District designation. For the time being, their immediate plan is to develop permanent off-street parking in this location. They've experienced a need associated with the Yaya's Restaurant in particular for additional surface parking. And the trend in this neighborhood is, is readily seen is away from any remaining residential character and towards a commercial redevelopment pattern. And so while the C3 zoning would not prevent construction of parking lot, Lighthouse Properties views the C4 zoning as more suitable for what they envision for the property. So with the removal of so many existing structures and the changes to this intersection, there's really been a change, and there's no longer any residential character in this neighborhood. And so a zoning change to C4 on these lots would have a minimal impact on the surrounding area. Plus, as you can see from the maps that were furnished, this property is located in the Business Improvement District. It's also part of the Star Bond and TIF districts, and that strengthens the applicant's case for C4 zoning. A couple of things I would note just related to this property from a physical side. And some forward thinking on behalf of Lighthouse Properties and working with city utilities. A sanitary sewer that ran up through the center of this property was relocated and goes straight to the east before it crosses this property. And so if there ever were redevelopment project in the future, the sewer has already been relocated. And then the storm sewer system at the intersection of Mulberry and Fifth Street has been enlarged. And so that eliminates concerns about intersection flooding that has occurred in the past. As far as the comprehensive plan, it encourages infill development in the core downtown and surrounding downtown neighborhoods. And it also encourages downtown to be a Park One, Park One's destination. So by providing for additional parking in close proximity to the restaurants and hotel, this encourages that. And so the Planning Commission had a Zoom meeting on December 1st, 2020. The applicant participated. There were no other outside parties that joined the meeting. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of Lighthouse Properties' request for C4 zoning. So this comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the request. And your options this afternoon would be to concur with their recommendation and approve ordinance number 2011047, rezoning this property on first reading. You can postpone consideration of this item to a future meeting date to allow the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information. Or you can, if you disagree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, you can return it back to the Planning Commission and state your reasons for disagreeing. Or with four votes, you could deny the application and to decline to approve the attached ordinance. So I believe we do have Mr. Booth present, representing Lighthouse Properties. And either staff or Mr. Booth would be available for any questions that you have.
Commissioner Hodges, thank you, Mr. Andrew. Do any commissioners have questions for either staff or for Mr. Booth?
Commissioner Davis, would our consideration of the zoning change be influenced at all whether the parking was restricted for hotel use or was available for general public use?
Well, the, the zoning ordinance allows surface parking lots as a permitted use, and we don't really have a separate zoning designation for public parking lots. So it's a discretionary item for the individuals that own the property, whether they want to restrict the parking to a particular use or users. But as a general rule, privately owned parking lots, the discretion whether to restrict that parking lies with the owner. And if they do want to restrict it, they would need to properly post the property. So I, I would defer that question to Mr. Booth. But the other private parking lots we have in the downtown, if they are posted, then they are limited to private use.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hodges, Mr. Booth, do you have anything that, that you would like to add? Or would you like to respond to that?
Well, we anticipated that private property, that the parking would be for the hotel Starbucks and Yaya's. We hadn't really discussed signage. The fact that there's not much else right, directly around this leads us to believe that may not be necessary. But there are visitors to the hotel, et cetera, that, that stop by. But if, if we determined that we really needed it specifically for our uses, I imagine we would sign it at that time. The other thing was, just in looking at the zoning for rest of the property north of Mulberry and our property northeast is all C4. We felt it was just cohesive to have the same zoning in accordance to comply with the area.
Thank you. Are there any other, Commissioner Hodges here? Are there any other questions for staff or for Mr. Booth on behalf of the commission?
I guess partially in response to Dr. Davis's question, I did observe staff, planning staff, had made several visits to the site for inspections. And as a matter of convenience or first opportunity, we pulled into the First Bank parking lot and parked there while we were inspecting things at the Homewood Suites Hotel. And shortly after that, we found that there had been a sign posted at the First Bank parking lot reminding people that there's, that's their lot and not to be used for a hotel or restaurant patrons. So that is an example where the, it is the bank's parking, and they, if they don't want patrons from the hotel or restaurant to use it, then they can post it accordingly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg here. Probably goes without saying, but having parking as a premium in the downtown is a good thing. I'd rather have that than have it be a ghost town.
Commissioner Hodges, any further questions from the commission? If not, I'll look to Mr. Wood to notify us. If there are any members of the public that have questions or would like to comment, please virtually raise your hand or send a message to Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood and let him know that you'd like to speak. Do we have anyone?
I don't see any at this time.
Thank you very much. In that case, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Commissioner Davis, I move we approve ordinance number 20-11047, rezoning property from C3 and R3 to C4 on first reading.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11047 on first reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Hi.
Commissioner France?
Hi.
Commissioner Ryan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Aye, that ma, that motion passes 4-0, and we will recall Mayor Hoppick to resume his role at the meeting, if he can hear us. I still see, there you go.
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that will lead us to other business. Is there anything that one of the other commissioners would like to bring before the group? You guys are gonna know what to do with all your time tonight.
I, I was, I was actually just thinking about commending Mayor Hoppick and Vice Mayor Hodges for keeping the ship in shape tonight and getting through this relatively expeditiously.
Yeah.
Well, we aim to please.
Yeah, and once in a while, we do it, too.
Making up for last week.
Okay, if there is no other business, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
We're moved.
Commissioner Ryan?
We have a motion, a second adjourned. We'll do a roll call on that, just to make sure everybody wants to go home.
Commissioner Davis?
Hi.
Commissioner France?
Hi.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. And with that, I would like to wish staff and my fellow commissioners a merry and a, and a safe Christmas. And we will see everyone back here next Monday.
Same to each of you.
You know, to you.